I'm the only one sitting in here with a short sleeve shirt on. Sweating jackets.
You were the highest spec getter at the church.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Something outside lately.
It's cold.
It is getting colder. The lows are like twenty to ninety.
Forgot to undo my spigots when I get home, I forgot this morning.
I don't, I don't cover any of my spigots, I never have.
Well, I don't cover them, I just undo the hose.
I don't even undo the hose.
Yeah.
I just, I just take the nozzle off the end, so if it, that way it just drains out. I got non-freeze hose bibs.
Undo the hose from the, um.
I just, I just take my spray nozzle off the end. I've got non-freeze hose bibs on my house. I just take the nozzle off the end, so if the pipe freezes, it just pushes out the end.
We're live, by the way, now.
We're what?
We're live.
Is he on?
Mm-hmm.
Thanks for someone. Thank you. Thank you. All right, all right. We will open the work session, uh, November the tenth, twenty twenty-five, for the Aberdeen Town Board. Glad you're here, uh, those at our home that are either watching or listening, we appreciate you doing that. And there is an agenda, uh, we can start with this, but if everyone has read one through, what, five, four? Everybody's read one through four. Continuation, consider, consider, consider. Somebody want to say something about that? You brought it up.
I mean, does anybody have an objection, just putting this as a consent agenda and just doing a unanimous vote? One way or the other?
Works for me.
Or do you want?
Don't we have set a date, though?
They're all, the dates are all set.
The dates are on there.
For our regular four people.
Twenty twenty-four, November twenty-four. Do you want to talk about any of these?
Well, we can still talk about it, even with the vote.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, she either said or can, one's continuing. The things that have been, they've been around for a while, but yeah, it's pretty much just scheduled.
So there's a motion, is there a second to do this?
Second.
There is a second discussion on any of these four.
Um, I had one question about one of them, and I thought it would come out when we discussed it. Number four. Could we, could you explain that one?
The vehicle backing, I didn't get that one either.
Yeah, I'd like to know more about that, the rest of them I know are just homes, then.
Yeah, tell us about four.
Rezonings and then, and then this, this one.
Number four.
Has to do with vehicle backing in the central business district.
Yep, so currently, there's, um, two different kinds, parallel and angled backing that currently exists. Um, but the ordinance does not currently align with, with the existing vehicle backing, um, activity. So this, this section is, the amendment is to, um, align it with the safety and existence of the current vehicle backing that's pretty much all throughout downtown with the on-street parking, um, to include off-street in some areas. So it's the angled parking and the, and the, um, perpendicular parking that, that this is in reference to.
Okay.
Who am I?
This is, this is the.
I'm sure.
Let me go find Job explaining that. The ordinance, ordinance restricts parking that forces you to back into a lane of travel. And yet we have it all over our downtown, and we have some proposed parking on Sycamore Street that will do the same thing. And the intent is to make some changes to the ordinance so that those aren't illegal situations there, that we can continue. Doesn't apply anywhere except the central business district.
Makes it conformant instead of non-conformant.
Thank you.
All right, so in most parking downtown, it's front loading, you pull in to the park and you pull up to the curb.
And then you back out.
And then you back out, was being gone off since cars have been in Aberdeen.
Yes, sir.
Right?
But our current ordinance doesn't allow that.
But the ordinance doesn't allow that?
That's correct.
So we're ready to find it.
That's correct. That's kind of what we said.
You're just ready to find something that.
Yeah, yeah, they would have called it sixty years ago.
Well, maybe when Model T showed up in Aberdeen, they might have figured that out.
But this would also apply to like if you're on a property and you're backing into the street, it would allow that to, which maybe is not a big concern. So it's a little bit more broad.
It was probably brought over when we redid, uh, the U D O, and it just, it was just one of those things that wasn't caught.
Do you remember that if you, if you go online, you can find anything about old ordinances that towns have had in the past, like no spitting on the sidewalk? Do you remember that one?
Yeah.
That was illegal at one time, I mean, nobody wants to do it, but I guess you probably could have gotten arrested for spitting on the sidewalk.
That's when everybody chewed tobacco.
That's back when they were chewing tobacco, that's correct. Well.
Restriction obviously makes sense if you're, you don't want people backing onto N C five or.
That's different.
It just applies to the central business.
So, so this, all you're doing when we meet on the twenty-fourth is to.
Discuss it.
Just get this done.
Yes, sir, and the, uh, the Downtown Advisory Board composition, she has recommended some changes to the ordinance, the U D O's language regarding who can serve on that board. So it's.
And adding two spots.
That's cool.
Is that?
Can I answer your question?
Is that, that is.
It's two different things, just a hearing set for the two of them.
All right, so any others about the one, two, or three above? If not, well, we got the four, so we just discussed it, so the record, the motion and the second is one through four, correct?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried, thank you. So we can get down to number five, which is discussion on proposed downtown social district amendments.
Good evening, so this is, um, a follow-up to what was presented last month, that there is some interest from the downtown board and through some of the stakeholders and business owners as well to consider some amends, specific amendments to the existing social district. Specifically, two that, that have been requested, uh, would be to expand the operating days to seven days a week. So currently, um, it's Thursday through Saturday, eleven A M. to eleven P M., and Sunday, one P M. to nine P M. This request is to include Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, eleven A M. to eleven P M., keeping Sunday, one P M. to nine P M. Secondarily, uh, in addition to that, there was a specific request, um, regarding the boundary. Uh, one of the property owners and business owners at two oh four East Main Street, Brenham, Inc., attended the downtown Aberdeen Advisory Board meeting with a specific request to consider including their three parcels, which are identified in the, um, including them in the boundary. So in theory, the boundary exists just prior to their first parcel, which would be two oh six East Main Street. So they have provided information for consideration based on their future intentions on how they would like to utilize and develop the property and the reasoning for wanting to be included in the social district in general for the east side of, of the tracks, as we call it, but still within the central business district. And so that was just those three specific parcels, which would be the only change to the entire boundary as it currently exists. Uh, and there is a graphic that, that identifies those, um, three parcels and what that looks like from a, a greater standpoint.
So clarify that for me?
So on the eastern, uh, I guess if you're looking at it from an L-shaped boundary on the very eastern corner along Main Street, East Main Street, um, I think it's, let me look what page it is.
In the packet, I think it's the.
Page five of your packet.
Page five, thank you.
This one?
That is a, an aerial overview, that's the next page, the page prior to that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It must be out of sequence or something.
Yeah, my computer went down, I apologize.
That's, that's it.
Is this it? Okay.
Yeah, the little parcel, the purple. The purple is the extension.
What does it look like?
Okay, so I'm trying to figure out, like, give me landmarks, who we're talking about.
So Keys Appliance is on the corner.
Across from A and R Railroad.
Okay, so, so it would be Keys Appliance.
Keys is already in it.
Cross over Garrett Street.
It's the next property.
The next three properties.
Across from the park, how about that?
Across from the park?
Direct.
Our, our Tiga's place is.
There and the two parcels on either side.
The two vacant lots.
Okay.
On either side.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's where he used to be, yes.
He's not there anymore?
No.
Okay, so that's the area we're talking about.
Greenham is in there now.
Who?
Greenham's in there now.
And they're actually wanting to develop into something that could possibly.
They have an existing building, two oh four is their current business, that's Brenham, Inc., that's the, that's the location of the existing business, and then the lots on either side, they also own those as well, it's the same owner, and that's the proposed development, which we already have approved C O As for.
Okay.
For those.
So I guess we're not going to get the building built there that we made it on to go four stories or whatever.
That, yeah, that was.
I think that's C O A now, I think it expired.
Expired.
Because they were going to put like a possible roof top bar or something at some point.
Yeah, that was, uh, Enrique.
What's he come back with, uh, what's he come back with?
They, they come back, they just, they just met the, the deadline, they just slid under the deadline. So they have approval for, um, buildings on both sides of that White House, it's in, in.
That's, uh, that's one of them.
Kind of like what she showed me, that sort of like.
Well.
It's one of them anyway.
There's a couple of things you need to, well, you can think about, not that you think about. There's, there's nothing on the properties now.
The what pages of?
Is that?
Oh, I got it, yeah, man, I got it.
One oh six.
Am I looking at the right one, dear?
Yes.
Sort, sort of like it, yeah.
All right.
There's nothing on those two lots, so.
Oh, we know, yeah, right.
You would be, if the board approves it, you would be approving something that doesn't exist.
No, it's already.
A social district that's something that doesn't exist.
He said, his point is we're extending a social district to an area where there is nothing existing now. With the possibility of something going there that would require.
They can have a.
That's, that's my point.
They can have a big.
They're not existing.
He's got these, well.
Offices are existing.
The building.
But that's not all.
Require a social district is what I think the point's being made.
Except for the building, except for the, uh, one of the offices now.
Yeah.
It's not that we would be against it. In my, this, I mean, I don't have a vote, but to change something to vacant lots with the hope and the expectation there may be something down the road, and if there is something down the road, we can always, I would think, come back and expand it.
I think that's a good way.
I think another thinking process, if I was the owner, is just another way to sell it. Like, you're part of the social district already, so if you want to put a business in here, you're already backed tied to downtown. It's just another selling point.
I'm not against, but y'all are.
If you went back and said, look, board was supportive, but they'd rather see some brick and mortar there first before they expand it, would that?
Yes.
That was, that was discussed, their response was the intent to hold in the meantime until they get the groundbreaking and construction going, uh, events, that would be community events, um, which would also be in theory, within approval, part of the social district to allow all the downtown businesses to participate.
On the lot?
On a, for a temporary use special event type permit. That was what, part of the, uh, information that they provided in the proposed, which is noteworthy, that was one of their, their points for bringing it to the board for discussion.
Well, they have the permit, they have some type of an outside event, would they not? I mean, they can't just, everybody just bring their drinks to that area and then just socialize. I mean, there would have to be something going on, you'd think, besides.
Without a social, without being included in the social district, they'd have to either do a special event onsite, or it would need to be included in order to participate in this, for the social district to, to apply.
Do they have a time for, are they, is everyone going to start construction?
I, I asked that question within the year, but I, they didn't have a, a specific.
Yeah, I don't think the board should feel compelled.
It takes a risk, like being across from a farm, just knowing yet, yeah.
They can come back.
Yeah, something in the world, I can say receptive, but.
Since they get something over there, they just bring it back.
And then, social district expanded second, because the idea is not to have a bunch of green open space there. I mean, if they were underway and had like a pad out there, eh, different story, but I don't know, it seems a little speculative.
Yeah, again, if they get something there, just present it to the board, if you want to go with it, fine. It's just to me, it's two vacant lots. And I know there was.
I don't mind, I don't mind expanding it, but I, I agree, we need to have something there that we're expanding it to.
Yeah.
Just don't need people walking up there on a vacant lot and.
I agree.
Getting that close to, because we still have people who have permanent homes close to there.
Yeah, one next door.
Yeah.
Well, you know, y'all.
It's just a discussion.
It's a discussion.
Yeah, we're not.
Y'all took that back.
But thank you for not changing Sunday.
Yes.
Because I've, I've gotten a lot of feedback that that was one day, they were, everybody was happy with everything else, but Sunday was not, uh, they were not happy about changing Sunday, so.
Sunday won't go over.
Thank you for keeping that time.
Thank you. Need more discussion? Anybody?
So if the hours were changed, it would require an amendment to our code of ordinances, and so, you know, looking for a direction from the board, if you're willing to entertain a, a public hearing in September.
Sure, absolutely. Absolutely.
Just for the time changes and not for extended.
Because people may come in and talk about it.
Hey, on, on Sunday, do they not want it before one o'clock, or they didn't want it?
They didn't want it before one o'clock.
Yeah, but I'm thinking till eleven, why not, like, like every other day? It wouldn't matter, would it?
It's, it's one to nine.
One to nine now.
They're saying if, if their relation was if you back it up and make it the same as all the rest of them, now you're allowing a social district while church is in session.
Eleven P M., not A M.
Oh, no, they were talking about the front end of it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so if we made it eleven, it's something till eleven every.
But I think most of the downtown business is close to eighteen.
Sure they are, yeah, sure they are.
It's, it's, it's working one to, one to nine.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so we need to, what, what'd you say?
Uh, if, if the board is willing, we'll bring this back to you as a text amendment.
That's right.
You know, I like this idea about having a Christmas party, we talked about that once years ago, uh, possibly right before COVID. But if they wanted to still do something on that empty lot till they get their building up, they just need to apply for permit, I mean, they could still do it.
And they have to rent the police officers if they want to do alcohol.
Maybe that has something to do with it then.
It does.
All right.
That, that's absolutely fine, this was a, you know, request from the.
Okay, I want to make it easy for them to do some activities though.
Tell them we're in favor of it, but build a building, and then we'll.
Something going up.
Yeah. Start construction, yeah.
So any other on five? Anything else? All right, I'll close five and go to six, consider authorization of reali- reallocation of funds in the planning department. Uh-oh. Where's that coming from?
They need a fire truck. Jesus.
Ms. Lemail is proposing, um, this has really got a budget amendment at this stage, this is, uh, the, the capital budget. And of course, when we come to you every year with our budget, the capital items are generally identified, where, where we'd like to spend that money. And with that, I will allow Ms. Lemail to explain why we're making this request.
We've been working on the crosswalks throughout downtown, and, um, the original reallocation request came from the line item that was specific for the downtown decorative lighting, so the Duke black light poles that are sort of, they're on Main Street and, and on South Street. Instead of starting that phased project, we wanted to finish the crosswalk and, and pedestrian connectivity, which, um, so that would be the remaining balance left in that Duke decorative light pole, uh, line item, reallocating it to finish the, uh, Main Street Railroad crossing pedestrian pathway. And that would allow us to complete the, into the downtown crosswalks on the west side of the tracks. That pathway will connect, uh, the Sycamore and Main Street crosswalk, oh, uh, across the Main Street tracks, and then connect to the sidewalk adjacent to the Aberdeen Rockfish Building, which continues on down to the Main Street Park, and then eventually, um, where the new library and Garden Park will be. So this will just give us the ability to, uh, sort of fast-track that project in this fiscal year. Um, that it's currently under, uh, engineering review with C S X, um, engineers that they've contracted out, and so we're waiting on that engineer report to come back before we can get to the next phase towards the construction piece. Um, that was a requirement in order to, to get approval for the project, um, for the pedestrian crossing. So, um, that's the graphic that you see with, um, in, in the packet that identifies where that, uh, crossing's going to be.
Your last sheet of your packet.
With the opportunity to finish this project, which we are coordinating with, um, with the railroad, obviously, we want to take advantage of that if we can.
Absolutely.
Of course, yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion that we authorize the reallocation of funds in the planning department for the capital budget.
I see it.
Discussion, anyone?
How, how much have we transferred?
I think it said forty, yeah.
Forty what?
Forty thousand.
No new funds being requested, we're just moving it to another project.
Works for me.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, that one carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Other business? You don't have any?
The library is pretty.
Yeah.
Did they get the floors cleaned? Did they get the floors cleaned?
Yes, they, they, the, the punchwiz is in profit, it's clean as a whistle right now, I don't, nobody was in there today. But it looks good, but there's a few little islands at the library, small island, it looked great, I mean, one, my fact, there's flats on it, you go back by there. But everything's completed in there with a few little, I think, hopefully they'll be getting to move furniture, getting, getting, getting. Waiting on a few punch, punch, this island right now.
If you haven't been in recently.
Pickleball, got his coat, got his coat.
I saw that.
First coat, and we barely made it, did you feel about the temperatures now? We got one quart striped last week, and this Thursday, with Wednesday the temperature going back up, they feel like that Thursday they can do the other three, and then it'll be ready. And we'll have a soft opening in the next week or two, just where people can go in and start using it, waiting on some signage. And then in the spring, we'll go back and add the next coat.
Final coat.
And then add the color to it, and then add colors, and then we'll, it'll be completely, but it, within the next two weeks, it should be functional.
Thank you, I've had people asking.
It looked, it looked pretty good. Hope it works and still the maintenance is, been to work here, looks good.
Looks good.
Everything's good.
Do, do, do a favor when you put your signs up, no pets allowed.
We got it.
Please do that.
We ordered a print design.
We got two big ones by the doors, that's got them all, including pets, yeah?
Yep. No, no shoes, no dogs.
Thank you.
All the good stuff, and it's waiting on them signs to get.
Do you remember, Teresa, about those, you had to run somebody out, was running their dog in there with the children?
Yeah.
Do you remember that?
So I can take my therapy cat with me over there.
As long as it stays on your shoulders.
Or have the harness, you gotta, you gotta have the harness. Harness on the cats, see how that works.
Teach you that play pickleball.
You get, you busy tomorrow, can we might come by tomorrow, take a look at him, or you got, got something planned?
Tomorrow's holiday in town, but I'll be more late than me.
Oh, that's right, tomorrow's Veterans Day.
Wait till we're.
This will be at the house Thursday.
Oh, what's your Thursday?
That's fine, that's my day off, so if I didn't have any other time, I can come and see it.
If you want to come by tomorrow, call me tomorrow sometime during the day and I'll meet you, I'm, I'm gonna be at the house.
I just haven't seen it in a while, I think it was in summer when we were out there, you and I were talking.
Right now, before they start doing anything up, it, it looks really, really.
It's almost, almost.
Furnishers in there.
Just call me tomorrow.
Okay.
You going up there after the meeting? You said you were turning lights off?
We're gonna stay in closed session.
Well, they say.
It's gonna be short a little bit.
It'll be short, that's a short meeting.
There was, there was, see, you got that punch list, are they gonna, um, pressure wash the front of the building?
That is not in the contract, but yes, we will pressure wash this.
Because that black line is still there and the white.
Hey, there's certain, there's some other things in there, like the concrete, it's on that corner thing out there, we're looking to resurface it yet right now. And when we do that, it'll be some other thing, there's gonna be some, a few more, gonna go right through them, maybe it's gonna be, especially the manager, there's gonna be a few more change orders that's gonna come in here in the last minute.
That front needs to be pressure washed to get that black tar off the front, you can see it, I mean, it's obvious.
We got to the parking lot too.
But remember, the home is in the home.
That's December's kind of challenge.
The home may cover up part of that, we need to get.
It won't, it won't cover all of it, and, and where the shed was, where the wood touched the brick, you can still see the white paint going up. I mean, it needs it, it, it would sure change the front of it, we can pressure wash and get that tar off. You know what I'm talking about, where the old roof was, you see that tar line where the, on the front of the building?
Man, they would get that off, you may, you may not get that off.
Well, you can try it.
Yeah.
You can try it.
Yeah.
And blast it.
Yeah.
Keeps it carried.
Yeah, makes it look like we didn't clean it up, what it looks like. We did, we did the other three sides, remember?
Yeah.
The other three sides look brand new, uh, and there's plants growing up through the cracks. I think those are briars too, aren't they?
They're weeds.
They're weeds. Well, that, it looks good, it looks good, I've been, I've been telling a lot of people, late till January, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a new library over there. Another business, yes, ma'am.
I got a, I got a email, some of the rest of you did probably, probably as well, but, um, the Chamber of Commerce is doing a ribbon cutting for Larnie Stone over in, uh, Jordan Place, which is over behind Elite Roofing, in that area of Aberdeen. It is Aberdeen, but anyway, they're in charge of the, you know, so we were invited, so I didn't know if anyone was planning on going, I'll try to go, because last one I think we, we went to with Chamber was needed the hotel.
Yeah.
Or maybe it has been since, I wasn't able to go all of them.
The, uh, yeah, we know where that, we got that, uh, invitation also. Uh, you know, if you can go to something like that, it can be nice. The veterans parade was excellent, for those that may have gotten out there to see it, um, big crowd. I was sweating by the time we got through with that walk, because it warmed up quickly out there. And of course, today, it's what, freezing, so that was Saturday to Monday. That's how quick it changed temperature. It was beautiful day, everybody out there had on shorts and T-shirts, I bet they're not doing it today. So anyway, it was, it was a good turnout, it's always a, a, a good event. With as many people that showed up and the number of veterans. Uh, I had a, my doorbell rang, this was after the parade, I hadn't already come home. And, um, there was a gentleman on my porch, ninety-three years old, Korean War veteran. He didn't make the parade, he, you know, for whatever reason, but he was looking for some information, and I thought, ninety-three, Korean War veteran, and there's practically no World War Two veterans left, they're down to just a, probably put enough in that retinal to count how many. to count how many's left from World War II. But Korea was only five years later, and they're the oldest ones now. And if you think about the Vietnam veterans, they're my age. Vietnam veterans are all late seventies, eighties now. So to thank the veterans, it was a great day out there. Large, large turnout. It's always good to see the high school bands. There were plenty of them out there, they were having a ball. So anyway, that was, did you go? You saw it, yeah?
Will there be anything in Carthage tomorrow? An actual veterans day, extended veterans event?
Probably, probably.
Okay.
At that...
Memorial.
The memorial park they have up there. It's online, the pictures are online, right? If you wanna see the pictures of the parade, there's plenty of pictures of the, of the parade from Saturday, so it was a good turnout. Other business, anyone else?
I went to Malcolm Blue, it was nice.
That was a good turnout.
It was very good.
And it, it was, probably the crowd was a little bit less because it already postponed it.
Yeah.
But it turned out well. It was, it was still a good turnout. If you got a chance to go out there and you, just to see all the little children, my goodness, there's more little children around here than we've ever seen. And it's, it was a great turnout. They had pictures in the pilot of that also, so...
There was a lady there from Black Mountain, and I had bought some of her pottery when I'd stopped through, stopped there going to Asheville. And I saw these coats, and I think, and I said, I think I have some of your pottery. And I, she said, and, and we, we made conversation, and she, I thought, well, we're so happy to have you here, because it's really beautiful pottery.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's always a good event, always a good event.
The ladies inside, they, they were doing a great job singing. Every time I go in that house, I still think about those hat, those dresses and those artifacts that need to be somehow preserved. And I said, I'm gonna ask the mayor.
Where's the black dress?
The black dress is not in there.
Where'd it go? Anybody know where it went?
They were, they were doing something to get it preserved.
Trying to preserve it, where'd it go? It wasn't in there.
I don't know. Well, that's...
Did Adam have it?
Adam was doing something to get it preserved. I remember, because you, y'all saw the direction of the board.
Yeah, we, the direction of the board was preserve that. That, that's a morning dress. It's a rare dress, very rare.
You didn't take it home to your house, did you?
It didn't get to my, it didn't get to my house.
And the building...
He does look good in black.
Yeah.
Not for him. He's got a bunch of stuff stored there.
The meal, we had that redone, so that people could see it, right?
Well, it wasn't operating, I wish we could get it.
But it didn't oper, yeah.
Well, you gotta have a tractor out there. You have to put a conveyor belt on it to make it work.
You're gonna have a specialized tractor.
You gotta have a tractor. I wish, plenty of people went through, but it wasn't grinding in the corn. I wish we could get it...
Unless Phillip can find us a motor with a wheel on it.
Right, if we went to the expense to open it up, now we can't.
I got a tractor on my barn to run it.
Do you?
Then we gotta find somebody that knows how to operate it once we get it running.
Somebody write that down, he's got a tractor.
It's the first time it moved too, when I go for...
Well, it was a good turnout. I appreciate those that got out there to see the...
It was a nice event.
It was nice, the weather was excellent, excellent. Other business, I'm trying to think of what else is going on. We got the library, we got the pickleball courts. We discussed the events. We got a calendar full. I hope everybody's written down their calendar for November and December.
Any updates on...
There's a full calendar.
There's a full calendar.
Elementary school?